Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor for his dedication and his commitment to the community. He's been a great help in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great mentor in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas. He's been a great partner in many of our areas.[891.61][891.61][S01. Thank you. We have any apologies?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilman McKay has tendered her apology this morning. Motion, please.
Any apologies, Mr. Mayor? Any apologies, Mr. Mayor? No. No apologies, Mr. Mayor? No. No apologies, Mr. Mayor? No. No apologies, Mr. Mayor? No. Do we have any disclosures or conflict of interest? We have none. Joint letter of reading about petitions, item B 21.2, joint letter. Mr. Senior.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just let the council know that we have received one joint letter which is headed petition. But under council's governance rules, any petition that has less than 20 signatures, and that's rule 7.21 subsection three, any petition that has less than 20 signatures is to be treated as a joint letter. The difference being that the matter is dealt with by officers rather than a resolution of council. So, Mr. Mayor, the joint letter reads, footpath trading fees should be waived for businesses trading this year due to the impact of the pandemic and the lockdowns. Now, I can advise the chamber that this joint letter has 19 signatures, so one short of the benchmark to make that petition, as it turns out. And this is a matter that council officers have previously considered. We have previously advised council of our decisions in relation to work we're doing on dining pods, free parking and a number of other waivers, which we did last year in response to the pandemic and have reintroduced this year. There are, Mr. Mayor, just about lost the number, there are 76 applications for street trading permits currently dealt with that are one-year permits and a further 19 that are three-year permits. So, we have about 100 applications each year, all have in fact paid their fees except for five, which we are following up.
Mr Mayor, during the number of lockdowns in regional Victoria between June and September, there has been a decision made to leave the dining pods in place to help provide safe and socially distanced environment for dining patrons. You may recall that it was council's intention to remove the dining pods prior to that because we hit lockdowns again. Council is certainly aware that there has been increased inquiry from local businesses and so we have reopened the applications for dining pods for hospitality businesses across the municipality. The dining pods were laid in managing the immediate challenges associated with the phased opening of business activity in response to the COVID-19 restrictions by impressing already existing dining areas. In relation to the future of the dining pods, there's been no decision made about that, although there has been, I'm sorry, excuse me. I'll say that again please. No decision has been made about the future of the pods, although the use of them for events and public spaces has been considered and certainly there's been no discussion about making them available for community groups or likely they will be re-ousd in public places or dining opportunities.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. Our last question is from Jackie Kelly and it's in reference to last month's decision regarding Swan Hill and Robben Vale aerodrome airport user fees, charges and conditions. Why did city officers not present a ban as an option?
I think this Kelly for her question also, Mr Mayor. Council officers did present a range of options for council's consideration at the report in the August meeting, eight in all dealing with aerodrome access and with user fees. I referred to option six that council introduced a curfew with different hours and suggested in the report. Now, that option really provided council with an infinite range of opportunities or possibilities. Councilors make their own decisions based on what they think is best for the community and no council is bound to accept the advice of any officers. Council has made the decision to introduce a curfew for all aircraft doing circuit training that the Swan Hill and Robben Vale aerodrome is between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That decision is being included, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. That concludes questions. I have a member that we're resumed standing on this place. His name is councillor of Robben. Jeffrey. I just can't recognise the guy for Jeffrey. I'll open the vote. I'm at the F K. Open forum, we do not have a member today, we have no members of the public. Section B21.76, child safety standards. Please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councilors presenting today the review child safety standards policy. Our council has been aware that since 2016, it's been a requirement of the child safety legislation for council to be compliant. This report outlines also some changes to the process, not just the review policy, but currently there are a number of standards that are going to be increased next year. In the past, councillors would have received quite a big document in relation to this. The child safety standards policy also basically included the procedure that is followed by staffing compliance. It has now been separated out, so it's now gone to a three and a half page policy document and the rest of the document is brought to the organisation and users. It's an ongoing process to remain compliant with this and this policy is the first initial step of council's compliance toward it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, Mr Maire, in the report, it talks about the 11 child safety standards commencing in 2021, according to the new standards. Yet the policy is only referring to seven.
Yeah, three, Mr Mayor, councillor McPhee. There are seven standards currently in place and they're expanding out to 11 in the next year. It won't require a policy to be updated because we need to see what the detail of those compliances standards are. The policy is basically committing us to follow the standards, however many there are, and our procedures reflect that. But yeah, they are in fact moving from seven to 11 standards over the next four months.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? Yes.
I'll move the motion, Mr Mayor, as well as the recommendation.
Thank you. Please save the councillor Jeffrey. Which speaker's motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, it's just a requirement of our child safety policy and I'm glad to see it introduced into a number of pages over that 21 we initially had. So I'd like to thank Mr Maire and his team for doing that. Policies don't need to be too long, but this is a learning curve to all of us and we've got to make sure that our children are safe everywhere and in all environments. Thank you, Mr Mayor. That's all Jeffrey.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. We all know the work that is happening in Victoria and across Australia and improving the ways to protect them, both alone people and the most influential times of their lives. It just goes to show councils, the officers that engage with it, how we look, which is the risk to security.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Do you want to close the vote, councillor McPhee? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, up and down the seat. Item B21.77, mobile food trading. Mr Green.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report is recommending the council adopt a mobile food trading code of practice to enable our officers to issue permits to mobile food trading vendors. The actual code of practice gives a really good summary of why we should support mobile food trading vendors. We currently have greater demand and people are asking for different sorts of experiences, particularly close to our rivers and lakes. And we are having, as I say, increasing demand from food, mobile food vendors to establish in our public open spaces to provide that choice, particularly in times of holidays when some of our fixed venue operators are not open or can't cope with this number of people seeking food. As the report outlines, we have done extensive consultation and got good feedback from both existing fixed venues as well as mobile food vendors, as well as the public about proposed locations for these vendors to establish, as well as costs and fees associated with it. So there's no advantage for fixed versus mobile vendors. And got a very good response to that. What we're recommending is that the code of practice and the proposed fees be approved and the council adopt the fees and charges, sorry, amend the fees and charges scheduled to include the proposed fees and charges in relation to mobile food trading.
Mr Green, councillors, questions? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This Green, I realise this is for public open spaces, which is fantastic and that's all in the policy, in the code of conduct in the report. Do, is there any solution, for example, mobile food operators who come into CBDs, for example, and set up on private land? Do we have any rules or regulations or anything we can do about that?
If they're in a commercial zone, they can do that. This is outside, this is basically giving approval to use our land.
Okay, great, but there's nothing we can do for the private land? Okay, great, thank you.
Well, unless they're using car parking spaces that are required for the use in the permit, if that makes sense. Apart from that, we can't.
Yeah, can't, I think, okay. Thank you.
Yes, two questions taken this for there. The design of car park land filed under control by council doesn't like, for example, the sort of busy streets. That fair line, car park? Because it's.
If it's been, some of that land's ours and some of it's not, so the bit that's not, I wouldn't cover that.
But they'd have to get permission.
Permission from V line or?
Got V line as well, yeah. And for specialty markets, it's a slower to a market in the CBD.
So that's different. So this does not apply to events where you're allowed to, with approval through the event permit, have a mobile food vendor in, as you said, so when we have the street closed and we might have vendors there, but they're usually only there for a couple of hours, not for days.
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Who are the questions, councillors?
All the answers, the recommendation.
So can I answer Jeffrey? Thank you. Respect the motion, councillor Jeffrey. Okay, councillor McPhee.
Really quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm a fan of food, I'm a fan of mobile food, I'm a fan of all food. So having somewhere dedicated that people know they can go to and apply for a permit, whether it's for one day or a whole year, I think has the potential to attract some more mobile food operators to places like the Robben Vale and Frontover summer, which is a hugely busy and popular area. So I think now that we've finally got this policy in place and fees, fees established, which are not, in my opinion, they're not excessive at all. In fact, I think they're very kind. So hopefully it does attract some more mobile food vendors to places like Riverside Parkings One and on the Riverfront and Robben Vale.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Now, I think it's great initiative, I know that food brands are becoming particularly popular during COVID times and particularly for myself, it's true, don't get confused with the idea of going down to, it's more attractive to go down to the park, let them run around and catch a once than go, go get a takeover of someone and charge around. So it's a different market than what some of the, why to sit down at a restaurant. But the kids like to go to the park, let the kids run around, get a nibble there. So I know some of the objectives we can see around, they're trying and they're business, but I think there's a pretty big market out there for them to attract to, to be managed.
I'll be the good guy, I mean, I just can't help it. Thank you. Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion?
I'll speak for my side, Mr Mayor. Just quickly, Mr Mayor, look, there's nothing in this policy that doesn't stop the fixed vendors applying for permit and doing that as well. And I'm pleased to see that the temporary vendors will be part of Swan Hill, which is important as well. They play an important role, they will be up here during tours and time, a lot of the time, temporary vendors, so they should partake and involve in advocating a rule.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Then none, we'll try to close the debate.
No, no, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to the vote, behind the bar, up to anonymous lady. Item B21.78, subdivision of land in the low density residential site located at the side of Swan Hill.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report's quite comprehensive, so I'll just really summarise some of the key points. Proposed list to subdivide a 4,300 square metre lot of land in the River Oaks estate into two lots of 2,000 square metre beach. That lot size does comply with the planning scheme. In fact, the planning scheme was amended by the state government in 2013, as were that was across all the border, not just now. To reduce the size of those lots to enable more housing lots to be created to meet the demand for that low density development provided water and sewerage are valid, which of course in this space they are. There was certainly a significant number of objections received to this application, which are summarised on page 75 and they include drainage, sewage, electricity, telecommunications, roads and largely amenity. The two key ones we consider are the drainage and amenity issues, the servicing authorities for sewage, electricity, telecommunications and roads, which of course the council all say that those services can cope with an extra one house in this subdivision. But drainage and amenity are probably the two key issues. The subdivision proposed is at least one lot into two, which would have two houses on it, existing house on one lot and a new house on the other. From the planning scheme perspective, the amenity can be maintained, setbacks can be maintained, those sorts of things. In terms of drainage, yes, we have seen the video provided by the executives which shows that at times the drainage, there is drainage issues. Council's engineers believe that the drainage, sorry, the stormwater can be contained on the site of the new, the newly developed site through conditions on purpose. And there may be a need for ledgers to be sent to every property owner requiring them and if their requirement to maintain drainage on their property, stormwater drainage on their properties as well, and not release it to the street, which it's not designed to do. So the recommendation is that we issue a permit with quite significant conditions around stormwater drainage and allow this subdivision. I will remind council, we're currently doing a study to provide further land for rural residential development because we are in desperate need of lots of this size, particularly close to towns, Grace and Swan Hill, Robben Vale, Lake Ogo. And this provides at least one more lot to aid that effort of this sort of development, residential development in Swan Hill.
Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Green, just with respect to the drainage and obviously it's been considered quite comprehensively. Obviously, some varied lots that can't be considered completely in isolation and I guess the reality is that despite best intentions and agreements with landowners, et cetera, the reality is in large storm events, the ability to contain all stormwater on a lot is very difficult, regardless of whether it's this estate or any other low density residential site. Do we have any leading instruments powers to seek a drainage contribution as one of the cleaning conditions that could go towards potential future drainage works in that estate?
Look, unfortunately, we don't. We don't have a development contributions plan attached to the planning scheme which would allow us to do that. The only option we would have is sort of a voluntary contribution that the owner might wish to agree to, that would then go towards a plan. The best option for council if you wanted to do significant upgrades is through a private street scheme or private scheme, drainage improvement scheme. Is that right?
That's the right word.
Yep.
Look, I guess we're letting the owner contribute, yes, yeah. Thank you.
Councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Green, in your professional opinion, will subdividing this block into two open a can of worms for the rest of River Oaks and other estates like it?
Look, we have approved similar subdivision, not in River Oaks, but in other similar subdivisions. We have done some analysis of River Oaks estate. We think there's probably five or six lots, other lots, that potentially could be subdivided into two because of the location of existing dwellings, there's an ability to, some of the shapes of the lots don't allow that. But I guess in time, don't know how much time, 20, 30, 40 years, when houses are, you know, potentially being demolished to allow for a subdivision, that could happen. But I suspect at the moment that for the next 10 or 20 years, that's very unlikely to happen because the houses are, you know, 20 years old, they're relatively new. So very difficult to subdivide any other lots. Or many other lots, I should say.
Yeah. Thank you.
Further questions? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Mr Green, in the report, it talks about 300 millimetre buns around the property to hold the stormwater in a stormwater event. Yet in the conditions, when you put into the condition of engineering, there's no mention of height, they're waiting for an actual plan to say what height, so they could actually hire the 300.
Well, you see, the plans will note. Yeah, definitely could actually hire, they could.
Right. And if that be the case in a unit storm event, obviously you're going to have a water pool there, they're going to have a driveway that will be raised so they have access to the driveway. Is that going to be considered? And if so, would the buns need to be hired? They've got to raise driveway.
So, I'm sure, Mr Mayor, the buns will go across the driveway, so they'll have a hump to go across.
Yeah, but once they get into their property.
Yep.
Inside the buns, and once they raise their driveway up, they'll be driving through water, you know, severe flood event or a severe rain event. So you would think the owners would be building a driveway up so they don't do that and therefore would the buns need to be higher again? Because you're taking away some of the catchment?
Not necessarily, because you can lower the rest of the catchment down. But if they can create more underground storage, like bladder storage, they can create more foot more rainwater tanks, there are lots of other solutions that they might want to consider, they may want to consider a pipe underground as a storage. So there are options, but we still to see an option that is.
Okay. When you mentioned water tanks to catch and store, like for lots of sheds, you're saying catch and store, what happens when they fall? Is there any condition for them to empty them for the next rain event? How do they go with that? There's nothing in there about emptying them.
So, sure, Mr Mayor, normally they need to be emptied prior to the next stormwater event, so it is on the owner to make sure that they are emptied before the next stormwater event.
Why haven't they got that as a condition in the stuff there? We're telling them they've got to have one, there's nothing in the conditions to say that they must be emptied prior to the next rain event. All they're saying is to store, catch and store. Page 79, section 7, number 7.
They have, sorry, it doesn't say that they need to be emptied, but they all, at all times have to have the capacity to contain around 22,000 and a half litres of storage.
Well, that's right, so they're contained, so the next rain event, they're already contained, the water they had, so where does it say they have to empty it? Yeah, I'm glad you spoke to him. He's a gentleman, I'm glad he's, he's a gentleman, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors?
Sorry, two questions, but I'll go back to the tank capacity. Is that something that would be issued in the planning permit or would that be something that would be added on what's it build, whatever size building they have? For example, on page 80, the Duke of Macdonald, on page 87, for example, has a bigger house that contains about 400 square metres of water. Higher capacity of tank capacity for that road prepared to become a house and that kind of.
And they need to, so condition seven is prior to the certification, so they can't provide it until they provide the plans that our engineers includes, which would be based on hard stand areas and house design. So they can't commence doing anything until they provide the plan. So it might be, you know, one 22,000 litre tank or a lot of two or three, depending on what they want to do.
And then, so if this was approved today, is that, is that something like council employees raise that has to connect to a storm event, is that, does that have to be added on?
It could be added to it. It'd be added to that condition.
My other question was around the funding and the size of the building that goes on the number of buildings. Was it, you could have built a special wood capacity to contain water. The funding, if I'm correct on the map of page 88, I can't quite read my letters, but one of the things is that only have the funding going, so half area in the property, that first effect, should not have been all wide, all wide open, although that's depending on the form of the land. Again, what size building they're going on.
A machine in the studio for.
So, yeah, sure, Mr Mayor, that is the planning objection that came from the applicant and now it has to be across the whole land. It can't just be in the front, there is not enough fall in the land to allow for partial flooding.
But fast way.
Which is why it hasn't been approved here, saying that you need to amend it, any sort of drainage plan.
Councillor Jeffrey, yeah, I guess I'm, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I guess the mission was done in 1999, when they could only go to 4,000 square metres. If this developer was to go ahead today, whereas down to 2,000 square metres, would the current drainage may say be suitable? I don't know, is that me?
Probably to deploy.
No, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further questions coming up? I'm ready for the place. Yes, councillor McPhee.
On to the motion as per the second option, Mr Mayor, that council should refuse a grant of permit, the company's in land, and the land is to be reserved as a another part of the road structure, based on the resident property.
Do you have a second? Yes, councillor McPhee. And give us.
Look, thank you, Mr Mayor. As the report indicates, this originally was 37 lots back in 1999. The original developer of those at that time would have definitely gone for a lot more if he could have. As all developers do, they'll get as much out of their land as they can. At that stage, he couldn't do it, so the plan was submitted for 37 lots with a drainage system to suit those 37 lots. Whether or not they suited is another question. If then unbeknownst to all the landowners who were bought there in that time, buying the 4,000 square metre block, if that lost all its mind, the state cabinet have come and knocked the top of them and reduced the amount of size that they can subdivide to, to 2,000 square metres. As the question was asked earlier, if this was 2,000 square metre blocks, would this current drainage system work? It wouldn't. What we're asking this developer to do, they do, build bundy around the lot, around their block. That in itself is not a good planning outcome. How do they get rid of their excess water? Does it just sit down and drain away? They're going to end up with a lake in front of their house, a hell on. Hence, we have the issue of the skidos and that as well, here and there around the area with stagnant water. It is a unique and a routine development down there. The people who bought there initially bought with that intention in mind and that was how it was devised in that system. A schedule which revolved since, since this process has come up, a schedule should have been applied to the liking planning scheme to allow that not to be subdivided down any further. I think that's something as a council we need to look at into the future. And planning is about to provide choice of different sized blocks. I agree with that whole heartedly. And in the report, you talk clause 11.01-01S about settlements, settlements are developed in a sustainable manner. If we start subdividing this down further, that is not sustainable, it will not work. You go to clause 11.02-1S, supply of urban land, reduces the amount of 4,000 square metre blocks, which are also in demand. They say there's a demand, yes, there is a demand for 2,000 square metre blocks, but we're taking away 4,000 square metre blocks, which is also in demand. We are currently looking at settlement strategy to address the 2,000 square metre blocks. That's where this should be addressed in that strategy, not by subdividing, subdividing those 4,000 square metre blocks, which we're going to lose, we won't have them again. The last part of the planning scheme, the identity residential zone provision, clause 32.03 of the small planning scheme, lots can be efficiently treated and retained wastewater. I don't believe that's efficient to retain wastewater to that extent on those blocks. We are a flat area, drainage is something you should, right across our municipality, we've got to be aware of it. You've got more hope of retaining that stormwater in the 4,000 square metre blocks than going to 2,000 square metre blocks. For those reasons, Mr Mayor, I think it's appropriate that we refuse this application or may getting on the planning scheme. There's such a doctor said there, it depends how you interpret those planning schemes. You can get rid of it any way you like. I don't think that's appropriate in that area. The area itself is bound by the little Murray farming zone, Rowway One, it can't extend, it can't go anywhere else. It is a unique area with 4,000 square metre blocks that the people bought there intended to live there on those blocks, not have smaller blocks. If you want a smaller block, probably think that was with it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with everything councillor McPhee has said. There are a lot of parts of the state's planning scheme that I don't agree with. I think I've made that very clear over the course of my time. I also think allowing this subdivision would contradict a lot of other applications we have to subdivide and excise dwellings, et cetera, et cetera, albeit those ones are in other zones. But again, it is subject to interpretation and I would interpret this decision to refuse a planned permit and refuse this subdivision. First of all, as councillor McPhee said, yes, there is demand for 2,000 square metre blocks, but there is also huge demand for 4,000 square metre blocks. And to start playing around with these blocks down in River Oaks that were, and still are, a premium subdivision and beautiful rural low density residential blocks, I think would be very poor planning and that's despite all of the conditions. Again, and councillor McPhee also says this, often, if we have to put so many conditions on planning permit, should we be granting that planning permit? Uh, my opinion here is, no, we shouldn't. And the community has been very vocal in the the other residents in River Oaks, been very vocal in their opposition to to this planning, uh, permit, so that's why I'm sending the motion to refuse the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bennett. Any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion. Councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak against the against the motion. Um, just picking up on some of the points from councillor Bennett and councillor McPhee. Um, the conversations that I've had with some of the residents down there, part of the reason they are so vocal against this, uh, proposed subdivision is they actually don't understand what the plan will say. They don't understand the requirements to retain stormwater on their own land. Um, and when I have explained that to a few of the residents down there, they they get a whole different perspective um, as to why this this application is is before us. Um, I believe that this application complies with the requirements of the low density residential, uh, zone. Uh, it's appropriate orderly infill development in such a zone. Um, I acknowledge and accept the issues with drainage, however, as I mentioned in my question to to Ms. Green. Um, the reality is that the majority of blocks, both in that zone and other low density residential zones in Swan Hill, do not have the capacity to retain their own stormwater. There's an expectation, whether it's valid or invalid, that, um, the the constructed stormwater system on the roadside will in fact capable of stormwater, which clearly it doesn't. And I think as part of this, uh, application, we we need as a councillor to take a long term view and and come up aside from this application, uh, with a strategy for rectifying drainage in low density residential zones uh, within our municipality. Um, so, yeah, I think I've said all I need to say, but, uh, yeah, I'll speak against the motion. Thank you.
Councillor King, any further speakers against the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against the motion. Um, one of the main things that I've seen is that there's been, all those objections come in from people saying that it'll lead to whole scale of subdivision of those allotments out there. But when you have all those people who are there objecting to the allotment, you would think that they would then not want to do subdivisions further down the track. So I don't see that that is so much of an argument that's been made out. Um, the other one with the emptying of the tanks, I think the emptying of the tanks will happen automatically because people can use that water, um, through their houses and also to do a lot of watering. So it'd be unusual that there would be that much rain in that space of time that they would fill up twice like that. So they're my two main objections.
Okay, councillor, any further speakers against the motion? Councillor.
I'll speak against the motion, Miss Bennett. This one's, uh, certainly one of the difficult ones that we've had. Um, uh, for me, the biggest issue that the applicants have is around the drainage, which we know the drainage at the moment is a hand in all the water that is coming from the other properties. And the question will be, are those properties containing the stormwater during storm events on their properties in in conjunction with the prior conditions that are placed on their properties? Uh, some of them might be, but I suspect a lot of them won't be, and that falls down to changing, changing ownership of the property and the lack of understanding in the, of the handover, essentially, of the property. People understand that they're required to have a drain or not. Uh, so it's a, it's a tough one to make a decision on. Uh, and I acknowledge it was a, it was designed as a primary mistake with four thousand square meters, because at that point in time, that was the minimum size they could go past on a land. That has since changed to two thousand square meters. Um, and I believe it fits enough with the criteria. And that since it was designed for four thousand square meters is a primary mistake, doesn't mean that it should be protected as far like that for, for this term. Um, the subdivision to two thousand square meters won't take away on the amendment in order which is the value of people's property because they were on the four thousand square meter, but actually, they obviously committed a curse of four thousand square meters. It's more of a permanent problem, so, um, tough one to make, but I believe it should be approved in the end. And the underlying issues that other property owners have on stormwater, they have to be addressed by the whole development. Their own reflection with councillors to make sure that they're retaining their water and their properties properly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. There being no further speakers. Or against the motion, do you, Mr. Close, to debate councillor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, as I said, there was, um, twenty-one objections to this, um, of the thirty-seven watts. So you're talking about, you're talking only sixty percent of the people have objected to this application. At the future developments, there's nothing to talk about. We can't talk, as Ms. Green said, we can't think four, ten years down the track. They've got to think twenty, thirty years down the track, when that whole area could be redesigned to two thousand square meter blocks. That's what we're going to look for. That's what planning is about. Planning is about providing a different style and different type of, um, accommodation, what size. We're taking away four thousand square meter blocks. Developers of these days are not going to want to do four thousand meter square blocks in low density residential, especially when it's near sewage, because it's not in their interest. They're not going to make the money from it. We are going to lose these and lose these forever. Once we lose these, we will not get four thousand square meter blocks back again. This is a very unique and boutique area. It can't be, um, growing size anywhere because the inhibits around it with the rower line to rip up the farming zone. And the farming zone is after the flood croaks, so there'll be no development south of that area anyway. Um, as the, the people using rainwater in any case, why would you use rainwater when you've got town water? You've got to use pumps, you've got to use power, you won't have a correctup. People are going to use their town water. And we're going to end up with an issue there of trying to retain water on the thing. Don't make the situation any worse than it already is down there in relation to drainage. This is going to change hands into the future. All the properties down there will change hands into the future. We've got to look at future developments, not past developments with drainage, future ones, to make sure that the drainage is set in a proper and a monopoid and correct manner. Let's not go fix mistakes we've made in the past. Those are the conditions there and there. Planning decisions have changed. Um, drains, um, drainage situations can be changed too, and make them more acceptable for those low density blocks. Let's hope those four thousand square meter blocks dunks up the water when it goes, and let's put a provision in the planning scheme so no one else can do it into the future. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. We'll now go to a vote. All those opposed with the motion. Goes against the motion? Motion is tied. I cast my vote against, uh, favor of the motion. Motion is carried. Item B twenty-one point seven nine, principal adoption of performance and financial statements. Mr. Westerfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the local government requires councillors to adopt his annual statements incorporating his performance statement and general purpose financial statements in principle prior to the order general issuing his oral opinion on the statements. Uh, the office has had a prepared account in principle, your principal adoption, and request the council to adopt these statements. Um, the council's audit committee have met and reviewed the draft statements on September nine and have recommended that the council adopt these statements in principle. And the local government act and the local Victoria Act in order to apply for rights that the adoption of is in principle and therefore must save a certification by the council as to completely access the information adopted. Once this has occurred, then the orders that will use their opinion and anticipate that this process will be completed shortly after the imprinciple adoption, which will make the financial statements available for council signing by the two appointed councillors being councillor Law and councillor Bennett. And then they could be included in the annual report, which will have a formal advertising process before it is likely to be adopted at the audit council meeting on the nineteenth, uh, nineteen to October in twenty twenty-one. Um, happy to take any questions the councillors may have on the statements that are presented.
Questions, councillors? No questions. Can I have a move, please?
I'll move.
Councillor Jeffrey, seconded, councillor Young, just to speak to the motion, councillor Jeffrey.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, thank you to John Law and all the staff involved in, um, putting together our, not our financial statements, but our performance statements and our services to offer and attendance and the cost ratios that follow with it, whatever come out, and actually talk about. Um, continues to show that we're in a good financial position. This is going to have a maybe that looks over the targets that we're setting, providing other other alternative and stages to offer, I'd say. Uh, I appreciate the importance of the adoption.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Young, just to speak to the motion. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? There being none, you just close the debate. Councillor Jeffrey, we'll go to a vote. All those opposed. Ask unanimously. Item B twenty-one point eight oh, there, immediately, keep the letter placed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this report is for councillors to note the topics that have been discussed at the last two council audit committee meetings post deciding off the minutes. On the eighth of April, twenty twenty-one meeting, the items that were included in the agenda were an update on the draft strip, internal order updates on recommendations, the audit strategy for the year ending in twenty twenty-one, risk management update, draft fees in charge of schedules for the financial year twenty twenty-two and quarterly before one hour for four months and positions to the thirty-first and the twelfth, twenty twenty. At the audit committee on the tenth of June, twenty twenty-one, the agenda included the strategic internal order plan for year nineteen to twenty-two update, uh, internal order updates on the recommendations from previous meetings, risk management updates, outplace heritage and the heritage Victoria implications in the quarterly plans performance in position to the thirty-first and the thirteenth, twenty-one. Uh, we're asking the council, uh, note that this report.
Thank you, Mr. Westerfield. Questions, councillors? No questions? Can I have a move, please? Move to councillor Bennett, seconded councillor Jeffrey. Do you have to speak to the motion, councillor Bennett?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Jeffrey, any further speakers for, for against the motion? There being none, we will go to a vote. All those opposed. Ask unanimously. Item B twenty-one point eight one, orders and risk committee member vacancy. Mr. Westerfield again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the early July council meeting, um, no, sorry, this is August council meeting, um, two vacancies were, uh, voted on by councillors to replace the outgoing members of the audit risk committee. Uh, one of the members who was duly appointed has subsequently withdrawn his application due to change in personal circumstances. We have, uh, spoken to the selection committee and they have agreed to put forward one of the candidates who was unsuccessful at the first round because the level and skill of the candidates in that round were of such a caliber that there were numerous applicants who could have been considered for position. So we are asking, based on the recommendation of the selection committee, that Mr. Greg could be appointed to the audit risk committee from the eleventh of November, twenty twenty-one, and the council duly appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Westerfield. Any questions?
Yes, councillor McPhee.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Westerfield. Is this in relation to when we appointed the last two members, or the two outgoing members? We actually written a letter to thank you then for the time on that committee?
Yes, we have. Yeah, we also formally, um, separated you to the last audit risk committee, which was the last one before.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, councillors?
I will, I suppose, by the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey, seconded by councillor McPhee. Just to speak to the motion, councillor Jeffrey.
Uh, because, um, thanks, I was like, we're putting this hand up, and obviously I had to be tall and I can like my great crucial to the role, um, so that while waiting there, before this evolved and by the side of this, it has, um, or they're all important, it is like, it's about, maybe there's a voice, yes, I should.
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Thank you. Um, yeah, look, I just want to, as part of that committee, um, that might be selected a little bit, we have a large number of applicants. And as Mr. Westerfield said, there was a number of them that were being scheduled for long, um, but we had to pick the most people. And unfortunately, Mr. Young has, for personal reasons and other reasons, had to pull out. So we're just grateful to have Mr. Greg could shoot come on, who is more than capable of doing the work as well. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any further questions? Councillor Jeffrey.
I will.
Thank you. We've got a vote. All those opposed. Ask unanimously. Item B twenty-one point eight two, election of mayor twenty twenty-one. Mr. Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you were elected to the current position of mayor on the fifteenth of November of last year. Uh, and there are provisions within divisions three and four of the local government act that deals with the positions of mayor and deputy mayor uh, and spells out, um, how those vacancies, when they arise, are to be dealt with. Um, section twenty-five of the local government act requires the councillors must elect the councillor to be mayor of the council at a council meeting that's open to the public. There's also a requirement of the act in section twenty-six that it be done as close to the end of the one year term as is reasonably practical. Uh, so pursuant to section twenty-six of the act, um, council may determine to elect the mayor for a period of two years. If such a decision is to be made, it must be made before the election. So the council can't conduct an election with councillors thinking it's to be for one year. And then a councillor say, or the mayor, just elected, say, I'd like to be mayor for two years, please. Council must make that decision before the election. And it has been the practice of this council not to do that. Mayors have generally been elected for one year terms. What I'm, also I should say, Mr. Mayor, that the act requires that, um, council must conduct the mayoral election, uh, in a council meeting that's open, open to the public. And so I'm recommending the council determines that the mayoral election for twenty twenty-one be held at the scheduled council meeting at the Swan Hill Royal City Council at two P M on the sixteenth of November, twenty twenty-one, which is one day off the one year average.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Is it, um, yeah, Mr. Seer, additional, additional rise to the mayor election? Or do you follow the science also to be mayor as well?
Yes. Oh, yes, that's correct.
Any further questions, councillors? Move it, please. Move councillor Bennett, seconded councillor Kane. Just to speak to the motion, councillor Bennett.
It's pretty presage, I think.
That may, uh, uh, super major, just like in, move it up. Ask unanimously. Section C, decisions which need action and ratification. Mr. Seer.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, pretty quiet month for the council seal, which was applied to only one document, and that is listed in the report just for transparency and accountability. Recommend the council notice the action of using the seal.
Thank you, Mr. Seer. Questions, councillors? Being done, um, and a move, yes, councillor Bennett, seconded councillor Jeffrey. Any debate at all? No, no, go to the vote, move it up. Ask unanimously. Item C twenty-one point one six, council assemblies record of attendance and agenda items. Mr. Seer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, again, a report with information that just provides, uh, attendance at the, at the council assemblies every month. Uh, and the items that are discussed and is every of the council's votes are important.
All the councillors.
Any range of questions, if there are?
Questions, councillors? Can we move the motion? Is that the motion? Yes, further recognition. Take your councillor, please. Seconded councillor Jeffrey. Uh, all those opposed. Ask unanimously. Section D, notices of motion, COVID-nineteen vaccine passport. Councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda, uh, I'd like to put in motion that, one, we oppose any form of vaccine. At the council, we oppose any form of vaccine passport system whereby our societal freedoms are linked to a COVID-nineteen vaccination status. Uh, and following that, that we write to the premier, uh, the member from Murray Plains, the prime minister, and the member from Malley, um, expressing our opposition to any form of vaccine passport system.
Quite seconded, please. I'll take the super major, councillor Bennett. Councillor King.
Thank you. Uh, pleased to have been able to speak with a quote from C S Lewis. The whole world is running towards a cliff. He who, he who is running in the opposite direction appears to be the one who has lost his mind. The purpose of this motion is not to debate the pros or cons of the COVID vaccinations freedom that are freely available, nor any greater topics related to health, medical advice, science or politics. I'm not qualified to debate human rights, privacy laws or the constitution. This is not about international travel or a personal viewpoint. I brought this motion to the council chamber in response to many requests for councillors to take a stand for the basic freedoms of the people in our community. We took a position at our last meeting, which in part read like this, council supports and is prepared to actively promote this support for increased vaccination rates in more communities. That said, Swan Hill Rural City Council also recognized that is it is an individual's choice to vaccinate or not vaccinate. I believe the motion I put forward today strengthens that position to truly recognize everyone's choice and reinforces the Australian Immunization Handbook guidelines, which states that consent to vaccination must be given in the absence of undue pressure, coercion or manipulation. I am very challenged. Is this the role of councillor to enter such a political debate? And I accept that these are not the sort of issues that I thought I would be debating here when I not only become councillor. But when people feel like they don't have a voice, I turn to those of us in elected office to represent them in the best way we possibly can. In recent weeks, the implementation of the vaccine passport system has been ignored by various state and state governments and the federal government. In short, the vaccine passport system seeks to restrict the freedom of individuals who have not received the COVID-nineteen vaccination. Restrictions are proposed, range of attendance at public events, general retail shopping, receiving basic services such as getting a hacker. Restrictions are proposed, range of attendance at public events, general retail shopping, restricted basic services such as getting a hacker, through to not being able to have family and friends in your own home unless you are vaccinated. The proposed vaccine passport system, I believe, is an abhorrent violation of Australian democracy. It is discriminatory in nature and it promotes segregation and division in our society. And whilst governments will tell us that vaccination is not mandatory, they propose a society for, for which, which for the most part will only be available to those who choose to be vaccinated. Based on the current information available in the, in the Victorian roadmap released on Sunday, unvaccinated people will not be able to attend their workplaces from the fifth of November this year. Regardless of their participation in society, going out for a meal, entertainment, shopping, sport, church, et cetera, unvaccinated people will lose their democratic right to earn a living. At a local level, if this accounted for even as little as five to ten percent of the working population, where exactly do the replacement workers come from in a community that is already crying out for more professionals, more tradies and more farm workers, just to name a few? How does this affect us, council as an employer? Furthermore, there is an expectation that businesses already drowning in the myriad of government bureaucracy and red tape will be the agency of enforcement of compliance to the vaccine passport and will face penalties if they fail to administer the government's system. How does a small business carry this extra burden? Vaccine passport system has already been scrapped by the UK government and many other nations around the world. I urge councillors to support this motion and send a clear message to our state and federal leaders that we do not support any measures which seek to divide our community. Thank you.
Good councillor King, any further speakers for the motion? Sorry, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, this has the potential to be, to be quite divisive motion. Um, and having spoken to both members that, uh, both state members, sorry, that we have in our municipality, there's nothing official, official, uh, surrounding a vaccine passport system. The vaccine passport system seems to, seems to be an American type, um, terminology. What has obviously occurred in the last week is the roadmap out which has different allowances for fully vaccinated people and unvaccinated people. I agree that, uh, businesses don't need any more red tape or any more state, state protocols that they need to enforce or and that they'll be fined for not enforcing et cetera, et cetera. Do I think this is the, this is council's place to get involved in this? No, I don't. Um, I second it, so we could have a debate and discuss this issue. I don't think, I think this is above council's pay grade. Um, I do agree however with the second last, um, the second last paragraph in the, the preamble that, you know, more government bureaucracy and red tape in business is absolutely not what we need right now. However, um, in our August meeting and our COVID response, it does say that council supports and is prepared to actively promote the support for increased vaccination rates in all communities, as councillor King said. And I think that writing to the premier's office and our members would be contradictory to that and could set us up to look quite foolish. And in our role as advocates, and there is a big difference between being advocates and being activists. I think this, a motion to contradict the work that we did last month could make us look quite foolish and damage some relationships, which are really important when it comes to advocacy. So I, I, I seconded it, so we could open the debate, but I don't support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any further, against the motion? Thank you councillor McFay.
Yeah, well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, look, as councillor Bennet said, if this is really a council issue, I don't believe so. The motion itself says oppose any form of vaccine passport system. Councillor King initially said that we're not making it compulsory for, in our last motion, last month when we put it up. We're not saying that people must be vaccinated. But now he's saying he opposes any form of, um, vaccination passport status. That's up to an individual business. Give them the choice. What is saying there in any form of vaccine passport? Well, if the business chooses to have a vaccine passport, irrespective of what government say, that individual business wants to do that, that's their call. We can't tell businesses what to do, not to have that vaccine passport. As to freedoms, there's already laws right across the spectrum to reduce our freedom. If we didn't have laws, we'd have a headache. You've got visas, interest in our country. There's laws around that. There's legal laws. You can't drink till you're eighteen. You can't get drunk. Al conditions. All the time there's laws. Road rules, every time you get beyond the wheel of a car, you're complying with laws which are reducing our freedom. O H and S, which is a big thing. Employers have to provide a safe workplace under O H and S. I think their line was setting back on that condition in relation to this. We are in extraordinary times because of this COVID situation. This in itself, this motion itself could divide the community. It's not our role, we need to listen to the medical experts and let them make the decisions. This is not a political decision, this is a medical condition. It all comes about from medical issues. If you read back a hundred years ago with the Spanish flu, they went through exactly the same things and people tired of them, just get through it. We're just asking you to be vaccinated, we're not sending you to war to die like we did in World War One and World War Two. It's a lot different. It is not about saying you must be vaccinated, but by opposing any form, you're saying that you're not giving, um, that's discriminatory in itself. So I can't vote, I can't support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fee. Any further speakers against the motion?
I'd like to speak against the motion. Um, I just agree with everything that's been said about, I think it has the potential to really divide our community because there's so many different uniforms on it. I don't think it's our role, I'm just not comfortable with us stepping into that area. And I think it's just an arena that we don't belong in.
Councillor, councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against the motion. Um, I'd probably say that the thing is, uh, proposed something that, that, you know, is worth debating. Um, I'm the sign up for the councillors that are involved in state of issues, uh, sign up to get involved and get things happening within my community. And this is beginning a disarming mentality. Um, the people I've spoken to had it. Uh, when, when this came up and I asked people around vaccine passports, most people I spoke to verified and I think that's reflected with the vaccination rates that are happening. Now, in our community, but across the board and in our surrounding municipalities, that the longer the people get vaccinated, um, we might even end the passport system if we don't get that. I was like, I was like, for sure, that will hopefully, um, the, the faith in Australia and the future of Australia, it does get out there. Um, now, given the fact that it doesn't prevent people getting COVID nineteen from what I've read and all medical experts, but, um, it stops, it increases the chance of not getting COVID, you know, that being hospitalised and hospitalized. Uh, and putting a bird of strife on the hospital system if you're getting yourself a house to, you know, not the same capacity that this program to, to check the relationships. So that's not a problem by the way. But I think, uh, the people in the community that I've spoken to who embrace a vaccination passport, if it had to get to that point, I guess, that does a passport particularly for different things, or it does it on my own to do things, that's just total international, total. Um, and everyone has total confidence. Um, but I do agree with, uh, some of the, the say for the motion, in particular around the business needing to check the licenses and make sure that not a mal, or, or, or people are here and up. But that's what I think our businesses do. You have to, uh, also, I, I show the people in my community that are here.
Sure.
Um, and put less on of businesses. Uh, I'm against, uh, the motion.
Thank you councillor King, do you speak to the debate?
Uh, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, and I will, I thank councillor Bennet for seconding the motion to, for the opportunity to have the debate. Um, so I do genuinely appreciate, I appreciate and value every councillor's comments, um, that have been made. Um, because I think it's an important topic for us to discuss. I do disagree that it contradicts our previous stance, I believe that it does enhance it. Um, I agree with councillor McFay that businesses could have their own regulations. However, the way things stand at the moment, government is, is, um, not allowing them to have a choice in that, they're mandating it. So they actually can't have a choice to have their own regulations. Uh, I think we could, um, perhaps this is something we can consider in the future, that, um, maybe we seek to see, seek an end date for any sort of regulatory system that comes into, into place, uh, as councillor Fee mentioned, extraordinary times, a hundred years ago, all that sort of thing. Um, maybe there's a, maybe there's, there will come a time where we will be advocating for an end um, to these regulatory systems, um, when the worst is over. Um, and I think, and just in, in response to councillor Jeffrey, uh, I agree with the people in the community that are supporting of it, but they're supporting of it because I actually don't think they have a choice. So that's, that's why they're supporting of it. So they just, and they just want a life to go back to the way that it was. Um, so I'll do anything pretty much to get there. So again, thank you for the opportunity to, to have the debate.
Thank you councillor King. Now go to a vote, all those opposed to the motion? Against? Motion is lost. Section E, for shadow items, do you have any for shadow items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Now, section X, third item's not included in the agenda. If there are none. Section D, to consider and order on councillor reports. You're first to vote.
Councillor McFay, councillor. Um, I should be in my report, Mr. Mayor, due to the, um, the, all the COVID situations we have left. Few meetings to attend, I did attend a, um, Zoom meeting at the Swan Hill Royal City Hospital. And it's very pleasing to see what advances are being made in relation to getting a third stage of the new hospital. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, get behind the technology this month, I embraced it last month, but, uh, didn't quite embrace it this month. Um, quite much due to lockdown et cetera, uh, just attended a Swan Hill Link, uh, board meeting. Um, where the, um, the issue of disparities again, um, made along the border, uh, was, was, uh, properly discussed. So, um, from our position as advocacy, uh, it'd be great to, to, um, jump on that again, uh, particularly in respect to different rules, uh, regarding hospitality venues, beat the sword with the ditch. Thank you.
Councillor King, councillor King.
Um, I have not submitted mine digitally, but I will and you can read it in the net. Thank you. Um, I actually went to the Art Gallery advisory committee meeting, the Swan Hill Hospital, the Masonic Hospital meeting, the Gurren and South meeting and the Enact Team meeting. The one thing that I've actually been doing is taking the council, what we did at the council meeting and just trying to explain to people a little bit about what actually happened at the council meeting. Because a lot of them just don't know. So I, I found that really interesting. Sometimes I'm passed around the actual agenda and they go, wow, that, oh, this paperwork, is that what you do? Yeah. Thing quite interesting.
Thanks councillor Young. Yes, uh, again, not much face to face, uh, all Zoom meetings, uh, uh, all the important Zoom meeting with Susanna Shee in Memphis, Cheven, on the vaccine strategy and vulnerable groups. Um, and some of which went straight to premiers, she's just had a direct line there, which was very pleasing. Um, a Zoom meeting with Anne Webster and various industry leaders regarding a coronavirus facility in Algeria for overseas workers here ASAP. Um, it's a work in progress, see what happens there. Um, Zoom meeting regarding NIV work care update. Now, this is a significant item and possibly a big, uh, possibly hit on our budget at some stage. Uh, so there was a bit of an update on that and I guess that will come to an assembly at some stage. Uh, that's a significant item that needs to be discussed. Um, another Zoom meeting, yeah, with the board representatives groups and taking up councillor King's, um, initiatives there and, um, comments previously, um, Mary Ann Thomas, Mr. Agriculture was on that. Um, and there's been the appointment of eight new border brokers to, to be appointed to, to deal with, uh, the significant border issues as we go forward and the harmonisation of rules across, cross border. Um, as we've known, it's been a significant sticking point over the last while. And of course, as councillor McFay said, Gus Weller needs a new hospital progress report, was, uh, very, very encouraging. Um, now, um, we've finished that section, uh, we now go to camera items. Can I have a move, uh, a move please? Yeah, the camera, councillor McFay said, councillor, councillor King, was opposed. Okay, carried, and we now, uh, ask, I ask councillors to remain seated, it's time to win extra.